Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to this October 6th meeting of the Mojave County Board of Supervisors. We're going to start with invocation by Pastor Calm. And if you'd remain standing, Supervisor Borelli is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, board members and those gathered here today. Let us lift our hearts up to the Lord. Almighty God, most high, our Lord and our God, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, we come before you right now and first we offer our gratitude for the great state that we live in Arizona, the beauty that surrounds us, the diversity, and all of the things that we are blessed with and we get to call our home. We thank you for Mojave County, which touches so much of this beautiful state and is so also diverse in so many ways. And we see, Lord Jesus, the agenda you have before us and the things that people are hoping to hear possibly in their favor. And so, Lord, we know that this board must consider all of these things and in doing so must consider what's best for the greater good, even though that may be difficult to hear for the decisions. So, your word tells us about wisdom and James tells us about wisdom that the wisdom from above is pure, gentle, peaceable, easy to be entreated, full of mercy and good fruits, without partiality and without hypocrisy. And so, Lord Jesus, we ask for all of these points of wisdom to be present here today and may your spirit guide us in everything that is said and done in the next few minutes in Jesus's name. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please face the flag of a country that has brought more prosperity to the world than mankind has ever known. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board of Supervisors, made by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the board's attorneys on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03, A34 and 7. Looking for a motion in action to call for an executive session to be held on October 20th, 2025 at 9:00 a.m.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As per to have it, do have it so ordered. Thank you. Official business has come before the board discussing pending or contemplated litigation claims and demands. Attorney Davis.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Committee and our legislative reports. Supervisor Latman?
Well, I'd like to thank everybody from the county who was involved in the National Public Lands Day on September 27th. We had a one day of public tours at Davis Dam for the public. And again, much appreciation to county staff who assisted in this.
Thank you. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I attended a neighborhood meeting with people on Joy Lane in Fort Mojave about our continuing sand issue from the development. People are just getting blasted out, sand blasted effectively. I also got the opportunity to speak to high schoolers and middle schoolers at Desert Star Charter School, which is a lot of fun. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Martin.
Yes, I got to attend a Constitution Day in Dolan Springs, which was really, really enlightening and they did a fantastic job. Also, as many people know, we had a catastrophic event up in Meadview and Holtman and I was involved with both of those. Happily, now everything is back in order. So, been a busy time in District 4 for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Borelli.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. I would report to those that are following the water situation in the state that the state has initiated a process to create a new active management area in the Renegress Basin. So, again, this next legislative session, we're hoping that we get a good third party or a third alternative rural management framework so that we don't have more and more of these AMAs popping up all over in rural Arizona. It's not in our best interest. With that, I go to county managers report. Manager Alters.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and board members. I don't have a report today.
All right, thank you. We have a couple of proclamations on our agenda this morning. The first proclamation is approve the proclamation declaring the month of October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Mojave County. It should remind us how precious American freedom is, how dehumanizing and perilous hatred can become, and how essential it is for civil society to uphold human liberty. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Mojave County Board of Supervisors honors the memory of Charlie Kirk, acknowledging his work, his convictions, and the influence he had on thousands of young Americans to participate in civic life and the marketplace of ideas. Recognizes the tragedy of his death as a profound loss, not only of one man's voice, but as a warning to all that no one advocating belief or dissent should ever be silenced through political lawfare or violence. Commits to preserving and promoting the values that define Charlie Kirk's public life, freedom of speech, robust political dialogue and engagement, respect for faith, and the courage of conviction. And affirms our belief in respectful public discourse as a tool of political persuasion, not physical force, in disagreement as a necessary part of American freedom. Be it further proclaimed that the Mojave County Board of Supervisors stands in solemn tribute to Charlie Kirk in appreciation of his young life and legacy, in sorrow at his loss, and in resolve that his death renews our commitment to ensuring that freedom, human liberty, and peaceful civic engagement are honored.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? We do have a couple of people that want to speak on that proclamation. Yes, thank you. I'm going to give them a chance to speak on this proclamation. They signed up, first being Mr. Stanley Hicks. If you'd like to come up to the podium and say, would you like to say about the proclamation?
Supervisors, my name is Stanley Hicks. I'm a Mojave County taxpayer. I just wanted to say thank you for your courage in this proclamation and honoring. I know I've seen and read a lot of people complaining, unfounded, I feel, for honoring somebody. And I would just want to say thank you for doing this and for doing it for the right reasons, not because of his Christianity or religious beliefs or his political beliefs, but rather for his courage, his tireless effort in getting the young people involved in dialogue. As he said, if we don't communicate, we resort to violence. There's nothing but negative outcomes. And this opening the microphone to the public shows that you all agree with that, that communication from your constituents is, while not always pleasant, it does result in nonviolent understanding. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Tonya Hicks?
Good morning, Tonya Hicks, Mojave County taxpayer. Charlie Kirk was loved by countless people across the world, across the country and around the world. Millions of us essentially felt like we lost a family member when Charlie Kirk was assassinated. He was brilliant and in debate, he could accurately recall details on countless topics instantly. He taught young Americans about the U.S. Constitution and he helped them understand the importance of voting. He effectively spread the message of Christianity and American freedom around the world, and he does deserve recognition. Thank you.
Thank you both. We have three presentations on our agenda this morning. The first presentation is the presentation of the 75th anniversary of the Davis Dam logo with artist Sheila Barger. Supervisor Latman has been working on this and championing this. I'm going to turn it over to him to do this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's truly an honor to join you today as we start the celebration of the 75th anniversary of the construction and dedication of Davis Dam, which sits on the Colorado River between Bullhead City and Laughlin, Nevada. This dam not only powers homes and businesses across the Southwest, but it also really connects generations of people in the area. Today, I have the special privilege of unveiling the winning official design for the 75th anniversary logo for Davis Dam. And I don't know if staff can put that digitally up on the screen for us? There it is. This beautiful design, and we're going to meet the artist here in just a moment. This beautiful design captures both the legacy and the promise of Davis Dam. You'll notice the two lines on the bottom powering progress and sustaining growth. And there's a story in that. There's, it's just, this is just more than a logo, though, and a story. It's about how people and place and progress have come together on this river that we share. At this point in time, I'd like the artist Sheila Barger to please stand up for recognition. Sheila, this is her. And I I've known Sheila for a long time. And not only is she a patriot and a person who loves this river and our communities along the river, she's a celebrated advertising and design professional. And your creative career spans decades, would that be safe to say?
I think so.
From New Orleans to California and back right here to Bullhead City in the Colorado River Valley. She's worked with a number of national brands. She has significant design work she's done for a number of groups and institutions in the New Orleans area. And her and her husband Peter moved to Bullhead City in 2014. And frankly, they are part of our community over there on the river. And she also has worked significantly with the River Valley Artists Guild. Her logo for the 75th anniversary really truly captures the heart of Davis Dam. And if you wouldn't mind again joining me in congratulating Sheila on this design. Terrific job, Sheila. And as we move towards the 75th anniversary, we're about two years out from it. It'll be in December of 2027. When we start community celebrations, we have to start early, and this is the first piece to fall into place. And the group that's heading this up will do a lot of work in taking control of this. Again, I really want to thank the Bureau of Reclamation, the River Valley Artists Guild, Sheila, the Mojave County staff and residents who just continue to play a part in this as we move forward. Sheila, again, I want to personally thank you and congratulate you for the work you did.
Thank you for that, Supervisor. Second presentation this morning is a presentation and update regarding the construction of Mojave County building projects. Manager Elters?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and board members. You had asked for an update from staff on the progress of projects. We will be presenting to you short presentation on three vertical projects, as we call them. And in future board meetings, we will provide additional updates regarding other projects. With that said, I'm going to ask Steve Lutowski to go to the podium and provide you a short presentation. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Liam Feltzer, members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity to provide a brief update on the three prominent building construction projects that are in progress presently in the downtown Kingman area. I first want to acknowledge our facilities manager, Book Finkbiner, Coach Finkbiner, his facilities lead, Mike Ross, as well as our office specialist, Cheryl Strong. That team has done an exceptional job by keeping these projects on schedule and conscious as well in terms of delivery. First project, and I'm kind of going in order of time to finish, is the Sheriff's Reach Out Facility. This is the new building adjacent to the Adult Attention Center. That's a shot to the rear of the building. Concord Construction is our contractor on all three projects. This is about a $3.9 million project budget with a 10% contingency on schedule, actually four months ahead of schedule to be completed in fall of 2025. Staff has been quite diligent working with the contractor in keeping the contingency down to less than 4%. At this point, all that remains, as you look at the front of the building, is the elevator installation. So staff projects a November completion date for this facility. Moving on to downtown, the Law and Justice Center, we call this Phase 2A. This is the remodeling, the annex immediately west of the historic courthouse. This is a $7 million project with a 15% contingency. Staff has been able to keep that contingency to about 4% at present, on target for a winter completion. This is just a photo of the interior of the building. Thing about this project being a remodel, we had a substantial amount of demolition work. So that has actually occupied most of the construction time. So now we're into the routine tenant improvement type of work of the drywall, HVAC, doors, flooring, et cetera. Lastly, the Legal Services Center, which is again on schedule under a $14.6 million budget. We started with a very, very, very modest 4.5% contingency. I will be bringing this item back to the board in terms of the contingency at a later meeting. It's on target for summer completion. This is really a latest and greatest photo of the site. We're ready to go vertical this week. The forms are off the retaining walls and what was a substantial amount of site civil work, meaning stormwater drains, et cetera, has now been completed. We're about 30% complete. And again, we used a good amount of the project contingency during the site civil improvements, encountered some unforeseen circumstances with certain utility conflicts and that. But at present, we are on target for a on-schedule delivery of this fantastic facility. I'm available for any comments or questions.
Thank you, Steve. Put it up to the board for any questions. Supervisor Gould, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Lutowski, it looks like the footprint of that building is quite a bit larger than the building that was demolished. Is that true? Or is it just the angle that the photograph is taken from?
Supervisor Gould, that would likely just be the angle that was taken. This, of course, was the site of the former Pine Street Jail. So this particular facility has a total square footage of about 36,000 square feet spread amongst two floors. So we are still utilizing by and large the same parking area that the former jail had available. We are also demolishing the building to the immediately west just to make room for additional parking due to the office nature of the building.
So it's more a new construction project with demolition than a remodel?
The Legal Services Center, yes.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board? All right. Sam, anything else or should we move on?
No, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. That will conclude for these three projects. We will have other updates on other projects that are currently underway. As you heard, staff is doing, staff is very excited about delivering these projects, and they're doing a really great job in managing them. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And we look forward to additional future updates as well. Thank you. Our third presentation on the agenda this morning is a presentation and update regarding progress on the 2023 Mojave County Housing Needs Assessment Goals and Recommendations. Manager Elters?
Once again, thank you, Chairman and board members. Mr. Chairman, you did ask for this update as well. Thank you. We structured it in such a way that we would provide an overview, understanding that three of our board members were not here when this housing assessment study was done. It will be short. It's about 10 to 12 slides. And then we'll be open for any questions or discussion you'd like to have. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairmembers. Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Let him jump in. Mojave County Needs Assessment. I'm going to give you a project overview. Mojave County prepared a housing study needs assessment to address the current and future housing needs. The study assesses the housing affordability process of all income levels based upon county demographics, including policy considerations aimed at enhancing local housing inventory. We started this process in June of '22. Shortly thereafter, the contract was awarded to CFS Group, who conducted the Housing Needs Assessment. It was completed in August of 2023. We brought that back to the Board of Supervisors for review in September of '23, and it was approved by the board in October of '23. So I just want to kind of give a little background as well about the engagement that we did because I think it's important. There was over 800 surveys from local community residents and stakeholders. And then we did 20 stakeholder interviews. We had three advisory committees and two public hearings. So we really made sure that we engaged our local community across all levels to make sure that we were hearing the voice of the Mojave County residents. So the Mojave County Housing Needs Assessment, here are a couple of things that really came out of it, right? Identifying housing needs to be addressed moving forward over the next two decades, as well as obtaining input from the local residents that we spoke about of what was being, what would be needed. Provided an interactive map, which we did bring to the board, and we do have, as well as a guide to developing local housing policies, programs, and strategy. So one of the major things that came out of the housing study was that we're going to need about 50,000 units between now and 2045. That's about 2,300 units, 2,000, 2,300 units, just to kind of talk on that. And additionally, during the time of 2023, there was less than 1% vacancy rate within Mojave County. So we wanted to make sure that we were going to address that need as well. And one of the other things that came out was there were about 8,200 units that were needed that currently weren't available for rent. So I'm going to just talk a little bit more and transition recent updates. So low-income house tax credit, there was two developments that just recently launched in Bullhead. So I want to make note of those. There's also an additional project that's moving forward in Lake Havasu City. There's a couple apartments in Colorado City. There's also, but I wanted to just highlight as well, even with these units being brought online, right? We're still very short in regards of what was needed to really make this project work. And I'll highlight that a little further when I get through the presentation. But I wanted to go back, I want to move forward to single-family residence permits because this is really what Mojave County is based off, our housing unit, right? And so, based on the recommendations where we are at, where we currently finished 2024, we've currently finished 2024 right around 1,650. So that puts us short around 650 units to be able to keep up with the pace and demand within Mojave County. So I want to highlight that. And then additionally, this is the next slide that came out. And I wanted to highlight, if you look at the bottom right corner, there's 8,200 units that were pent up that we believe. With that being said, really, it's the housing stock in the middle is solid. But for the residents of Mojave County that are on the lower end of the economic spectrum or the higher economic spectrum, they're really fighting for that middle ground for apartments. All right. So what have we done? What has economic development as well as Mojave County Community Service been doing? Over the past year, Economic Development, Tampi Anderson Bach and myself, have met with over 35 local and national developers discussing different options and buildable, and building options as well. And really looking at how these apartment buildings or housing in general could be developed. Some of the things that really came out was Boxable. We had an opportunity to see them. Strata International has been applying for different projects within Mojave County. I know they have at least five projects right now that they're currently working on and doing estimates for. And manufactured housing, we also provided that as well. So we want to make sure that we give everybody an opportunity there of really what was to keep it moving. So that we could keep development within Mojave County apartments, housing, any ADUs. Because we're going to need all of that in Mojave County to keep, to keep the numbers where we need to keep moving. But key findings, I wanted to go back to this. This is another important one. So this kind of talks about barriers as well. So from 2020 to 2022, and with 2022, construction, I want to just share, on record was the highest anywhere in the country ever on record for inflation, right, for construction. So that really impacted the units available in Mojave as well as across the nation. This isn't just a relation to Mojave County. So I want to touch on that and really just say we're looking at different options for builders and making sure that we're always keeping our eye on that price. Next one, I'd go to cost of infrastructure, right? So we understand here in Mojave County, we do have some things in regards to outside of the county uh and in the cities, the infrastructure of the, of, of what we have currently, water, so forth and so on. But one of the things that we did do uh with one of the largest developers uh that's come forward, uh, which is almost a thousand homes, is that we worked with the Greater Development Authority uh for Arizona, uh Mary Foot, uh Director Foot at the time, she's now the Director of uh Economic Office of Opportunity. And so when we were approached by the local developer, they're like, is there any grants or any way that we could get additional help? And so we shared with them that they could reach out to the Arizona Department of Authority. And they were able to get, or they're in the process, it's, it's not been completed, but they're in the process of applying for a grant, which is over a million dollars to support them in regards to their waste treatment center. So we have done that. So that was something I'd like to highlight. And then, if you look at contractor availability, uh, that's something that in my department, being the Director of Workforce as well, uh, we really took that on. And so through Arizona at work, uh, we've really been working with all of our different contractors. Uh, recently, I would just note that there was a couple of grants that came out uh via ARPA uh that we could help, that people could apply for. So for contractors, just in the last thirty days, um, four, four apprenticeships have actually moved forward. Uh, so we had Service General, uh, as well as Air Control. Air Control has three different options that they actually uh have apprenticeships for now as well. Uh, and there was an automotive one, Automotive Mechanic in the city of Lake Havasu. And I highlight those only because through apprenticeships, um, the retention rate is so much stronger, and, and it, and it shows people a career pathway. Additionally, uh, we started a project in Havasu and in the process of finishing that up, where the students will get dual credits to be able to go in the morning from six to eight, from six to eight AM. I'm sorry, six AM to eight AM in the mornings and do pre-apprenticeship. So the students will get dual credit for that, and we're in the process of actually putting that through and working with our schools on that as well. So we're doing a couple of different things that way. And the reason I touch on the contract is it's contract availability. If we don't have the, the building uh infrastructure or the builder, builders to build, we, we can't really make those things happen. So I wanted to just touch on those. So the last time we came, there were some other uh policies that were brought forward to the board. If there's more interest in any of these, we could talk through the, some of these. These really haven't necessarily been addressed uh or moved forward in some of these. But I'll just, I'll just notate them so that they're on the record. Create tax incentives for affordable housing developments, encourage master plan developments, and create public-private partnership. Uh, there are some things that could work or not work. I wanted to touch on this one additionally because with this here, the Lytec, the Low-Income House Tax Credit, been around since nineteen eighty-six, it's created more affordable housing or workforce housing uh than any other uh program out there. But the reason I want to highlight and touch on this is because part of the issues that we have in Mojave County and the cities additionally is that there's a process that you have to go through. And so it's called the Qualified Allocation Plan. At the end of the day, they total them up, and it says, all right, if you're there a hundred or you're a hundred and five, right? But here in, 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 in rural Mojave County, as well as all the rural counties, we really struggle um getting either a redevelopment area to get the points to get us over that edge, or there has to be a, a government loan slash property uh joint venture. So those things have happened. And then the past year, uh, for the wards, they've really gone to the, to the colored counties around Phoenix. If you look at where those Lytechs have been approved. And additionally, I would just note that that went under this uh current administration from nine percent to twelve percent for that program. So I wanted to highlight that. And then additionally, I have had an opportunity um this past uh, uh, week to uh reach out to the two developers that I know have worked in Mojave County and ask about bonds directly as well, uh, four percent deals. And they just said currently at the time, uh, these, these opportunities will not pencil out to make that work. So I didn't want to make mention of those. And then just say, you know, through this process, um, it's really, as a community and as a board supervisors, uh, legislating the, the, the policies uh that you want to see move forward for this. But it's going to take all of us, like I said the last time I was in front of you, really to make this happen. Look at all different options across the board uh to really make a difference within Mojave County. And that'll conclude my report, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Director. I'd open it up to the board. Supervisor Gould, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Director Smith, if you roll back to your pie chart, that's all green.
I, I rolled back. There you go.
I'm having trouble telling which green piece of pie is which green government entity.
Sure, I'll walk you through it, sir.
Thank you.
Chairman, Supervisor Gould, uh, so Mojave County is nine hundred and one. Uh, the city of, of, uh, Bullhead City is, is three hundred and fifty-one. Uh, the city of Kingman, and I, I apologize for the colors, they're a little different. Two hundred and thirty, I'm sorry, Kingman is. The colors are confusing, I apologize about that.
In the future, I would suggest you use broader spectrum of colors.
Noted, I would agree. It looked different.
Green is nice, but.
It looked different on my screen when I was doing, I apologize.
I'm sure it did, sir. The, the other question is when we, this came before the board in twenty-three, I think that the board's assessment was without wealth redistrib- some form of wealth redistribution, there was not a lot that the county could do to make houses more affordable. And I kind of believe that's still the case today. And as far as trade training, I, I, if you have work, I'm, the workers will ha- will migrate this way. That's how it generally works unless the entire nation is, is busy. Um, I'm also apprenticing my two grandsons without the aid of the government. Um, so I don't know if you guys want to include those two guys as trainees or uh not. But thank you, sir. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Lemon, thank you.
Director Smith, I had a question. When is this next going to be updated?
Chairman, Supervisor Lemon, we are in the process of doing that, and I have been working with Economic Development on that as well. This really is an ongoing living document. We've been updating this and bringing this additionally, we brought this twice to the Mojave County Housing Board of Directors, which the Board of Supervisors sits on. We do that every March, and we'll be doing that again as well.
Yeah, my takeaway from reading the, this current document from two thousand and twenty-three, one, one minor item that was on page eleven of the document, and I'll just read it. It was talking about new residential construction. Bullhead City has an adequate water supply where the city can grow to approximately a hundred and twenty thousand residents. The city continues to support significant development potential through its general plan, and I, I agree with that. I, I'm not sure we're going to be growing to a hundred and twenty thousand residents, which would, you know, be almost triple the current population. I'm, I'm not even sure the people who live there would go for that. But uh, that, that's a minor point. My takeaway, big takeaway was I wanted, I would love to see when it's revised, more emphasis on affordable housing for veterans, even though I know that that is addressed in here. And I congratulate, you know, I think it's Lake Havasu City that has the small houses for the veterans. I, I think there's a development. Kingman, okay. And it, you know, kudos to them for that. But as, as this goes into revision, I would certainly like to see, because I think that's where there is a severe need for this type of housing, especially for veterans. And that's my only comment.
Chairman, Supervisor Lemon, uh, thank you for that opportunity, and I would love to expand upon that uh and a couple of other things that I would touch on. But in regards to the veterans, we have worked with KVV, Kingman's Veteran Villa, that is through the Community Services Department. Those are actually voucher-based, uh, so they're actually tied to the vouchers that our department actually facilitates. Additionally, I have a further conversations uh scheduled for next week for another development. I can't share the details of that, but there's another development that is moving forward that's been brought forward and, and said, what, what do we need to do to, to repeat Kingman Veteran Villas? Uh, and, and what does that look like? So we'll be, we'll be working with them and, and trying to help them through that process. Additionally, I would note that uh there was recently an opportunity, and if, if it's approved through the process, we'll bring that back to the board. Uh, there was five additional vouchers that, that the VA and us as a, as a collaborative wrote a letter to say, is there a need here in Mojave County? And yes, there is a need for that. So if that gets approved, then we'll route that back through the Board of Supervisors and provide that opportunity. When we talk about affordable housing as well, I want to touch on that because there are several different things that have been brought forward. Uh, and one that I would notice, and, and just because I've, I've had an opportunity to get to know the company, is Strata International, right? They come in ten to twenty percent lower uh construction-wise for affordable housing. So there's some really great things they can do there. Additionally, um, there's another thing that's coming through Havasu, uh, and that, that's moving forward. And my department's working directly with them, and they're going to start their, their workers there at twenty-five dollars an hour, which is a decent way uh to uh build a apartment building. So they're going to build a hundred unit uh in Havasu that will be moving fo- well, let me, let me step. College. They are in the process of going through uh having that development approved. If it is approved, they'll be able to do that. What they've brought them in, the things that we've, the things that we've seen is that they're going to come in when they build that development. It'll be anywhere from uh temper- they're looking to try to get ten percent below our fair market rates, which will include facilities in regards to Wi-Fi and other things as well. And this is going to be going through planning and zoning in the very near future. They have dates set, and they've been working with the development.
Supervisor Martin, thank you.
Thank you. Director Smith, we have a lot of, of proposed development out in Golden Valley, in Pravada, in Dorado. And are those houses that are going to be built or, or are they going to be needed? I mean, is there a real need for those?
Chairman Lincoln Felder, Supervisor Martin, uh, there, there's definitely a need for, for apartments. Uh, I mean apartments, single-family homes, all of those. So when you look at our stock, and I, and I, and I kind of said that tongue-in-cheek there, I'm sorry, to answer your question directly, we need housing for everything, but do we need housing in those subdivisions? Yes, I mean, that was one of the recommendations that came out of this, as well as having water. Uh, and when, just to go back to uh Supervisor Lemon as well, we, we, we worked with all of the water districts as well to really know the aquifers, where housing could be built, where there was substantial, where the, where the land, as well as the price of the land would work out. And so those were some areas that were identified in Golden Valley. And like I said, we really engaged the local community. I mean, eight hundred, eight hundred surveys was, was a lot of numbers. Uh, working with that, the, the, the group that did the, the needs assessment, they said that they've done over a hundred uh of these different kind of assessments, and they said they've never had community engagement uh like with, they've seen in Mojave County. So that was something that I was really happy to see. So to answer your question, yes, it's needed, uh, the lot sizes and that, that's, that's for the, that's a policy issue that I can't speak on. But the housing need is needed. It goes back to that, the, the first slide that I spoke on where it was saying that we need between two thousand and two thousand, uh, two thousand to two thousand three hundred, right? Additional houses every year. We haven't kept up with that. We were at sixteen fifty, our multifamily use for that eight hundred pent up uh was, was, was nearly, you know, untouched when you look at either through the county, through the different cities. Uh, the multifamily really has not moved. So when we, when we look at our overall assessment, if we don't do something, and, and so, single families where it's at, and cost affordability is where it's at. If we don't start building more, more houses, it, and it really just comes down to, what do we want the community to look like?
Couple of points. Golden Valley has made it very clear to me anyway that they're not looking for these packed-in housing. They, they, they would prefer one-acre developments. You, you said something about water, and that really is important, maybe the most important thing. You have information from ADWR about the availability of water to serve households in Golden Valley. Uh, is it in fact sufficient according to our state?
Chairman Lincoln Felder, Supervisor Martin, I would, I can share that when we did this report and working with the different water agencies within the state of Arizona, we were assured, as we checked the data, that there was enough water to support the additional opportunities that we were going to present, as well as which aquifers had the best opportunity for water. This is something that we worked extremely hard on to make sure that we, we had all this information. And I would just note that when we, for, for the board, uh, new members as well, is that when we did this housing study, this wasn't just the Mojave Community Service Department. Uh, we, we actually worked with uh Economic Development, we also worked with Scott Holtry, uh, the county manager, as well as other city officials. We, we, we had the, the, the group actually reach out to all the city managers. So all the city managers were, were, were just, had this conversation, those were stakeholder meetings. So we really drilled down into the water issue as well to make sure that whatever we shared with the board, those were accurate numbers.
Great, thank you.
Director Smith, uh, the reason I put this on was the county spent almost a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars on this study. And so I think we owe it to the citizens to show some progress on that. If you look on page thirty-five and thirty-six of the report, there's a number of recommendations that came out of that. And the ones I want to focus on are the ones that um are in the categories of zoning and co-changes and, and reducing the regulatory impediments to development. Things like removing the lot coverage standard, things like amending the characteristic standard with front and side rear setback uh requirements, maximum lock coverage, um, evaluating reductions to off-street parking requirements to multifamily housing, things like this that would actually help the private sector to do what they need to do. My question in putting this on at that price tag is, out of those recommendations on page thirty-five and thirty-six, what has staff accomplished? And if we haven't accomplished much, when are those things going to be brought to the board for discussion and possible action?
Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to present this. That's Exhibit twenty-five that you're referring to on page thirty-five and thirty-six. With that being said.
You're speaking of the microphone, please.
With that being said, Chairman, we, we did, we did bring those to the board uh for, for conversations twice, and we've additionally brought those back to the Board of Supervisors at, at our housing meeting that, that I spoke about. Additionally, every March, we bring that back to the board uh for a conversation, and I presented both of those as well. Uh, I presented that both times to the Board of Directors for the Mojave County Housing Authority to see if there's things that could be addressed there. With that being said, I just want to share that we have brought several things there in regards to regulatory. I did have an opportunity to see what they did over in, I believe it was Yavapai. I reached out to Director Holtry uh and shared that there could be building plans that we could do so we could have a set building plan as well, uh, that builders could come. And I know Scott was looking at that as well. So that's one thing that we can do. I know there's some other uh state initiatives in regards to ADUs and, and different things that can be done there. Uh, policy-wise, if there's anything that the board would like to give direction to, I, I would, I would love to hear that and, and bring those things forward and have that discussion.
So if I heard you right, did you say you, you've brought a number of things out of this report and these recommendations to the Mojave County Housing Authority, is that correct? And my question is, when are you going to bring some, some ideas out of this? Not just to the Mojave County Housing Authority, but also to the Board of Supervisors. I mean, things like, should we remove the law coverage standard? Should we change the off-street parking requirements, things like this? Um, simplify development standards for accessory dwelling units. I mean, all this stuff is in these recommendations for reducing the regulatory burden. And I'm sure maybe other supervisors have some, some things they want to say too. I haven't called on you yet, Supervisor Brawley. But um, is that something that staff is going to start bringing to us? Those things are within our circle of control. I agree with Supervisor Gould that we don't have any control over the private market. But those types of things we do have control over to make it easier. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think the state legislature might have solved part of this problem for us since they essentially legalized, everybody can put a second house in their backyard. Um, and we're going to take a look at that to, today. So that might affect cost, but I guess we'll get the details of that when we move into that item later.
Thank you. Supervisor Brawley, do you have some comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And, and one of the biggest complaints I hear from, from contractors is dealing with the bureaucratic red tape and hoops that they have to jump through, through the whole permit process, so on and so forth. And then obviously, the construction costs of materials. I mean, that's going to be, that's a commodity-driven thing. But the biggest complaint is the frustration of getting it through the process, of getting a permits approved and before they can even break ground.
Mr. Chairman.
Manager Elters, thank you.
I think if one steps back and looks at the whole process and the achievement or lack of, and what steps can be taken, um, I think it's, as Supervisor Gould alluded to, when this was presented, the feedback from the board was, um, you know, we, Mojave County are not interested in subsidizing and, and taking actual steps to make it happen. We would, we would prefer to have the free market decide. And so with that in mind and understanding that most of these successful, especially when we talk about the Lytec grants, are based on partnerships between local agencies and these, these developers. So we have not had many of those here. Going forward, as, again, as Supervisor Gould pointed out, the state legislature really changed the game, perhaps in a good way, where they've said, um, you know, basically every lot can have one additional, one auxiliary. lot can have one additional, one auxiliary, and some can have two, depending on the size. Lastly, we are getting ready to update our zoning regulations, and that would be an opportunity to integrate some of these ideas and steps in that process. And I will end with, we historically hear complaints about, you know, permitting and length of permitting and such. You know, I would just say, in fairness, when we do look at these steps, it's really a partnership. We review plans that are, that are substantially complete, and we, we do request completed plans before we issue a permit. And often enough, when we look at these things, it's a joint effort. We have to receive completed plans before we can issue a permit, and I just stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager. I would agree with you, and I think that Mojave County's done a good job with what we've put forward, or this board's put forward. We've put up the option of 100% electronic plan, submittal, and reviews. We've put up voluntarily a shot clock policy for those types of things. What I'm talking about is, I still think that, as one supervisor, there might be some additional room to work with staff to reduce the regulatory impediments, and then also to continue to take a look at our zoning co-changes. That's all I'll say. If there's anything else, other comments? Thank you for the presentation today, Director Smith. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the consent agenda, items four through 48. Supervisor Lemon, would you like to remove any items from the consent this morning?
I would. Item number 24.
Thank you. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 29, item 34, and item 38.
Sir, Supervisor Martin.
I have nothing.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Barelli. All right, and I will pull nothing, so I'm looking for motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, minus items 24, 29, 34, and 38.
So moved.
Second.
For that motion and second, in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. As per to have it, do have it, it's ordered. Thank you. Item number 24, acknowledge receipt of and refer to Public Works, a petition to the Mojave County Board of Supervisors requesting that South Antelope Drive from East Joy Lane to East Lightning Road, located in the Fort Mojave area, a distance of approximately .25 miles, be accepted into the Mojave County road system for regular maintenance, subject to meeting all applicable requirements and subsequent board approval. Supervisor Lemon.
Okay, so Director Lutowski, if you could give us an overview, I believe we're talking here about the access road into the Sun Valley Airport area. What's going to happen? What are the steps in making this happen? And what's the criteria going to be for accepting this into the county roadway system?
Yes, Chairman Lincolnfelter, Supervisor Lemon, I do have a map of the access roadway, South Antelope Drive. What happens is Mojave County maintains a public petition process by which any person of the public or entity can petition to have a road considered and possibly accepted by our Board of Supervisors for inclusion in our road maintenance system. This is an item that we follow a two-step process, and this item is merely to acknowledge that we have a petition. And right now, the request is for the board to acknowledge and refer the petition back to Public Works to work with the applicant for their, for them to bear the cost of improving South Antelope Drive for regular maintenance. Because they are pursuing the regular road maintenance petition, we would expect them to present us with plans that demonstrate the reconstruction of the roadway to minimum county road standards as adopted by the county.
Okay, so this is just an acknowledgement, and you're going to come back and see us later on with more details on what's required to bring this roadway up to speed.
That's correct. And Chairman Lincolnfelter, Supervisor Lemon, this is going to be at the applicant's pace. We do not have a deadline for them to complete these improvements. If the applicant were to run out and do them within a couple of months' time, great, but if they take longer, then we will bring this item back to the board if and when the applicant completes the improvement.
Beautiful. I'll go ahead and move for approval of item 24.
Second.
For that motion and second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. As per to have it, do have it, it's ordered. Thank you. Move to item number 29, acknowledge receipt of an application and affidavit for agreement, for a new franchise agreement authorizing the location, construction, maintenance, and operation of a natural gas utility system within the unincorporated areas of Mojave County, owned and operated by UNS Gas Incorporated, and direct Public Works to set a public hearing date and time at the Mojave County Public Works Building located at 3715 Sunshine Drive, King, Arizona. Give proper notice to the public of the hearing and conduct the hearing. Supervisor Gould, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted an overview on what this actually does, from Director Lutowski.
Chairman Lincolnfelter, Supervisor Gould, staff and Unisource are pursuing a franchise agreement to memorialize the aspect of Unisource Energy with their gas infrastructure being located in the public right-of-way. We are in a position as a county, via past litigation and attorney's opinions, not to be able to charge Unisource Energy a franchise fee, per se, an annual franchise fee. What the ultimate license or franchise agreement will provide, though, is that the franchisee, Unisource Energy, will have to pull and pay for individual right-of-way use permits when they go into our right-of-way to either construct or otherwise maintain their infrastructure. That has been the model that has been ongoing now. The benefit of the franchise is it does memorialize certain terms and conditions in the sense of Unisource's energy's rights and the county's rights to manage the right-of-way.
Mr. Chairman, Director Lutowski, so this does not allow for a payment from Unisource to the county?
Only in the aspect of meeting the right-of-way use permit requirements, but no, it does not provide for an annual franchise fee payment.
Do they, and they still have to pull individual permits?
They do, yes.
So all this does is put the, put an agreement in place on what the terms are going to be?
Exactly. Kind of memorializes the greater right for Unisource Energy to be in the public right-of-way and outline the terms by which they still need to comply with certain county requirements, such as right-of-way use permits.
Is that the same in item 34 for the electric?
Chairman Lincolnfelter, Supervisor Gould, yes. We just wanted the staff to make these separate, because they are going to be separate franchise agreements.
Sure. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
For that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As per to have it, do have it, it's ordered. Thank you. Item number 34, acknowledge...
Motion to approve.
Thank you. For that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As per to have it, do have it, it's ordered. Item number 38, approve the National Environmental Health Association, U.S. Food and Drug Administration Retail Flexible Funding Model Grant Program Award in the amount of $8,500, and the amended fiscal year 26 budget provided in the backup material. Supervisor Gould, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Palmer, can you give us an overview on this?
Yes, this funding, and good morning, Chairman and Board of Supervisors. This funding provides assistance with its technical assistance, training, and any other costs that go along with standardizing our environmental health division.
So are they trying to standardize across the nation?
Not necessarily. There are health departments throughout the nation that participate in this program and in looking to standardize, but it's not across the board. It's something that we've chosen to do, because a lot of our policies and procedures are largely outdated and do not align with our ordinances, statutes, and our delegation agreement, and so we're looking to align all of those items.
So it's more of a, of a best model situation?
Correct.
Questions from the board?
Hearing none. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Looking for a motion? A second? Second. You've heard that motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. As appear to have it, do have it, it's ordered. Let's see, that brings us up to item 49. 49's a public hearing. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on item 49. Anyone here to testify on item 49? Anyone here to testify on item 49? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on item 49, and I'll turn it back over to the chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm here with summit locations for item number 49.
We have one member that signed up to speak. We do have one member for item number 49, correct?
Yeah.
Mr. McClure, you signed up to speak. Did you want to speak?
Mr. Chairman, did you reopen the public hearing?
I'll reopen the public hearing. Mr. McClure.
Yeah, Scotty from Bullhead, really got nothing against 49, 50, 51, I was kind of doing all of them at once. I'm griping about the attendance on these planning and zoning, the five-to-two and the six-to-one votes. People are missing these meetings, and I don't know, it's like Bullhead, we had a big problem down there with, we couldn't even get a quorum on some of the meetings, these special meetings. Not just planning and zoning, but on quite a few of the tracks, whatever. But I think there ought to be a certain number, you miss a certain number of meetings, you're out. And when I started running school board, for nine years, I never missed a minute. I took an oath to attend and participate in the meetings. And for these people to use this maybe as a political platform in the future, well, I served on this board here, and use that as a background, and they only served like half the time, or, you know, whatever. But there ought to be an item on the agenda here that, if they miss it, if they're not in the morgue, if we had one, or the hospital, there's no excuse.
I'll close the public hearing once again, and I'll entertain a motion. Do I have a motion on item 49?
Yes.
It's a good discussion.
In regards to that actual, the billboard thing, I think that, that more information needs to be brought forward. We need to adopt some kind of a policy that restricts where billboards can be put up next to churches, you know, schools. We did have an incident out in Golden Valley where a billboard was put up that was close to a school that asked the question, "Want free marijuana?", and that's probably not appropriate. So I, I saw this one, and it, it really brought to light the need that we need to go back and revisit that whole situation and say, hey, because we don't know what's going to be on the billboard. We have, we can't control that. That's, that's a right. So what we can do, though, is restrict the distance that these billboards can be from these institutions like schools and churches. So while this one here, it's here. So I'm going to make a motion to approve this.
Supervisor Barelli. Director Holtry, can you come to the podium, please?
Good morning, sir. Like, my question, what are the dimensions of this billboard? And this is a digital billboard?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Barelli, that might be a better question for the applicant. I believe the applicant is online. Typical, our billboards are standard size. I think they're over 600 square feet, but I think our applicant could speak to that. Regardless, the application does allow for the maximum, which is that 675-square-foot billboard, and it can be digital, yes.
My question, when we pass order, excuse me, Mr. Chair and Mr. Holtry, when I was in the legislature, legislation for these electronic billboards are restricted, there's a lot of restrictions on them, especially at Mojave County. Is this within the restricted area, outside the restricted area? And this is going to be, are they going to adhere to the dark sky ordinance that we have? They have to be turned off at 11:00 a.m.?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Barelli, it is not within those restrictions that were set by the legislature, so it is allowed according to our ordinance. We have an ordinance within our zoning ordinance that is for, it's not, it's not called dark sky, but it's a lighting ordinance. It does not require it to be shut off at a certain period of time, but we do require that any lighting for the billboard has to be shielded, and it couldn't be passed a certain amount of lumens.
Supervisor Barelli.
Mr. Holtry, to that point, the state law does require that those electronic digitals, they have to be turned off after a certain time. I think it's nine, I think it's 11:00 p.m. That's in state law. So hopefully, the applicant is aware of that.
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Barelli, that's something I would have to look into.
Thank you. We do have a motion from Supervisor Martin. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? As per to have it, do have it, it's ordered. Item number 50, we'll open up the public hearing on item number 50, discussion and possible action regarding approve the adoption of BOS Resolution Number 2025-170, a rezone of accessories parcels, number 32905005065096102103114128129327 through 330373444 through 446 and 508 through 510, from an AR, R, excuse me, from an R1, 1A zone to an AR zone, to allow for RVs as temporary residences in the White Hills vicinity, Mojave County, Arizona. Commission recommended approval by six-to-one vote. We have nobody signed up to speak on item number 50. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak during public hearing on item number 50? Going once, going twice. I'm going to close the public hearing on item number 50, open up to discussion or a motion from the board. Supervisor Martin.
Make a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
I just had a couple of questions on this before we move forward.
Director Holtry, can you come to the podium?
Director Holtry, these properties are all owned by the same individual?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Gould, that is correct.
Do you, knowing that we are not the enforcer of CCNRs, but I'm curious if this development has any CCNRs, since this is, it looks like a subdivision of R1 zoning, and then we're going to go back in and allow these lots to get AR zoning so that they can get trailer permits, so that they can live full-time in their RV?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Gould, I am not familiar with the CCNRs on this development. I know the applicant is here and could maybe speak to it. I also will state that we have done hundreds of rezones in this same subdivision. It was, it was plotted back in the sixties, I believe, and it's not ever been developed with an R1-type use in that area. The infrastructure's not there. A lot of them went up on the tax deed sale. That's where the current owner is able to acquire a lot of these properties. This is probably the third or fourth time that we've come to the board with these type of rezones in this subdivision, and they have seen some success with converting them to the AR lot that doesn't require the stick-built home. It would allow for that RV. But I do know the applicants here, if you wanted to inquire about the CCNR.
There, Mr. Chairman, that would be great.
Okay, could we get them to come to the podium, or the representative, please?
Top of the morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors. You know, I'm not sure if they have CCNRs for this area, but Scott did a really good job in explaining to you, we processed this on a couple of hundred other different lots in this area. These are old lots that were never developed, the subdivisions were never done, they're over 65, 70 years old, legacy lots, and this has brought life back into those lots, where the county is now starting to get tax revenues. It's been very successful. I'm happy to tell you anymore, I just, I do believe that there are CCNRs, but I just haven't been involved in them, so I can't commit to telling you exactly what those are.
My rub is... My rub is, if it's got a property owners association, it's probably defunct anyway. Just because it's such an old subdivision, but I have some concern about changing the rules and it would be more concerning if it, there's a lot of development in the area and then you're coming back and changing the rules on people.
So the C C and Rs that would be set up by this group, Western Land and Ranches, is only, pertains to their lots. And they have several hundred, I mean, like probably over four hundred lots now in these five sections of land of these old legacy lots. So it only pertains to those lots, it would not pertain to someone not with, not within that original ownership. So they're just talking about their lots. And the issue of the RVs, I mean, the R-one zoning to the A R is very similar. It's a residential use on a one-acre lot. It's just that the A R, over the past year or two, the county has allowed for the use of the RV, but they still have to go through a permit, they still have to get a septic permit, they still have to get an RV permit. So it's not a Wild West scenario. It's people going out there for a living and it really created some momentum during the pandemic when people just wanted to get away and the county was stopping them from getting their RV units on these lots. And there was a big discussion on that. So then it was determined with the proper permits, you could in fact take your RV unit and sit on your lot.
Shockingly enough, I am familiar with the procedure.
Yes, you are.
I'm just curious, what would you, the percentage of development inside that particular subdivision? They showed us some photos of, I don't know if those are non-compliant people or whether those have been rezoned already. I didn't, the maps seem to show them all as being R-one.
I've processed with Western Land, one application, I did two-hundred-and-seventy-eight lots in the five different sections. Another one, I think I did ninety. So I think it just depends which section you're looking at. There is one section that is almost entirely owned by someone else, I'm aware of that. But it does depend where you're at, there's five or six, five or six different units in this thing.
So were the neighbors of these parcels notified, the neighbors within three hundred feet all notified to this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, and we haven't had, we've had a couple of comments, I've gotten one or two. And this is over the past year and I process all these. But normally they're okay with it, they just want to make sure it's not going to turn into a mess. But I always tell them, you've been out there sixty-five years and nothing is going on. And this is the only way to generate some revenue.
Generally, it's the, the son inherited it from the father who inherited it.
Exactly.
And then the grandson has it and he has no knowledge of it. Somehow the tax bill gets paid or it doesn't get paid.
Yeah, and they call me and want to know what's going on, what happens now.
Sure.
And so.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and second that motion and move it along.
Thank you, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, I appear to have it, do have it, so ordered, thank you. We'll open up the public hearing on item number fifty-one. Discussion and possible action, approve the adoption of B O S resolution number twenty-two-five one-seven-one. A rezone of accessories parcels that are listed there. Let's see, from an R-one, one-A, single-family residential, one-acre minimum lot size zone to an R-M one-A, multiple residential, one-acre minimum lot size zone to an A R agricultural residential zone to allow for RVs as temporary residences in the White Hills vicinity. Commission recommended approval by six to one vote, again. We have nobody signed up to speak during the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak during public comment during the public hearing on item number fifty-one? Going once, going twice. Oh, do we, sir, come down. Thank you.
Kenny works yucka. I think that allowing all these RVs in there, they're going to be hooking up their RVs once a week and taking them to a dump station or there are going to be septic systems to go along with this. That's my only concern, thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak during public comment? It's Tackett Hicks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Supervisors, my name is Kathy Tackett Hicks. I just wanted to clarify that every one of the RV units would require a septic system. So they'll, that's taken care of. And one clarification, this one's different because it also allowed for a conversion to, from an R-M lot. Again, that was a legacy designation of sixty years for multifamily, which is totally silly. So we're recommending the conversion to A R.
Thank you. One additional call, is there anyone during the public hearing in the audience that wishes to give comments? I'm going to close the public hearing on item number fifty-one. Entertain discussion or a motion, Supervisor Martin.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second? For that second, additional discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
I believe that A R zoning also allows them to camp for two weeks out of the year, if I'm correct, that R-one does not.
Mr. Chairman.
Attorney Davis.
Supervisor Gould is correct, allows for fourteen days out of the year.
Director Holtry.
Mr. Chair Supervisor Gould, I don't believe we designate which zone allows for that use. We do allow for fourteen consecutive days to camp on your property and thirty out of the calendar year. But we do not designate which, which zone allows for that type of use. So currently, these are one-acre properties. If we had somebody camping on their property, we would, we would abide by the ordinance that we have, which is fourteen consecutive days or thirty calendar days.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We do have a motion in a second, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, you guys appear to have it, do have it, so ordered, thank you. We'll open up the public hearing on item number fifty-two. Approve the adoption of B O S resolution number twenty-two-five dash one-seven-two. A rezone of accessories parcel, number three-nineteen-oh-seven-oh-one-oh-B from an A R thirty-six-A agricultural residential, thirty-six acre minimum lot size zone to a C R E, commercial recreation zone for a campground in the White Hills vicinity, Mojave County, Arizona. Commission recommended approval by six to one vote. We have nobody signed up to speak during public hearing on item number fifty-two. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on item number fifty-two during the public hearing? Going once, going twice. We'll close the public hearing, I'd open it up for discussion or a motion, Supervisor Martin.
I attended the P and Z meeting when this was discussed and there was no opposition. At that point, there was only one commissioner that had an issue, but no one from the public objected. So I'll make that motion.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second? We have a motion, a second, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, I appear to have it, do have it, so ordered, thank you. We'll open the public hearing on item number fifty-three. Approve the adoption of Mojave County Ordinance number twenty-two-five dash zero-six. A request for an amendment to the Mojave County zoning ordinance for sections fifteen, sixteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-three, thirty-five, thirty-seven, point D, thirty-seven K, and thirty-seven P to allow for accessory residences on any lot where single-family dwellings are permitted as required by Arizona Rice statutes. Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. We have nobody signed up to speak on this during public hearing.
Can't get it either.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak during the public hearing on item number fifty-three? Going once, going twice. We'll close the public hearing on item fifty-three, open it up to the board. Supervisor Gould, thank you.
Can we get Director Holtry to give us overview of what the effect is of this?
Supervisor Holtry.
Mr. Chair Supervisors, thank you for this opportunity. We already allowed for accessory residences almost on every lot within Mojave County. The state with the bill twenty-nine, twenty-eight wanted to almost lessen the regulations on accessory dwellings throughout the state. For us, it affected essentially two things, mostly just two things. One is, we currently allow for an accessory residence on every lot. The new bill introduced that you can have an attached accessory residence and one detached accessory residence. So essentially, you could have your primary residence, an attached, an attached accessory residence and one detached accessory residence, that's the biggest change. So essentially, every lot within the county can have up to three dwellings on them. If, the other big change is properties that are over one acre in size can have one additional detached accessory dwelling. So if you have over one acre, then you would be able to have four dwellings on your property. We still require that you come in and apply for the permit. We want to make sure that your septic system or the lot can contain what you are proposing. They also, one change that we're making in the ordinances is there, they lessened the setback requirement for accessory dwellings. So any accessory dwelling can be within five feet of your rear or side property lines. That's a change we've made in our ordinance previously. I think we had a fifteen-foot setback on your rear property line. The other change is allowing for the size of the accessory dwelling. We currently in our ordinance state that you can have up to fifty percent of your primary dwelling. Your accessory dwelling could be up to fifty percent of that primary dwelling. The state statute is requiring seventy-five percent. So that's a change that we've made throughout our ordinance. If you want higher than seventy-five percent, we still have in our ordinance that you can apply for a special use permit and to come to the commission and the board to get that. I think that's, I think that's all the changes.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Holtry, on that five-foot setback on the detached accessory building, I know Lake Havasu used to require a ten-foot separation between the other building, is that still required?
Mr. Chair Supervisor Gould, that's not a requirement that we have within our zoning, our zoning ordinance. We have a separation requirement when the buildings face each other. So if a building, the primary residence and accessory residence have accesses that are facing each other, then we have a separation requirement. But as far as the property line is concerned, it's five feet is our separation requirement.
So if you had doors on the, doors on the back of the primary building and doors on the front of the secondary building, you'd still have a separation between the two?
Right.
You know, why does that separation have to be?
I believe it is similar to the ten-foot, I would have to go back and double-check that.
Okay, and I think it's a special use permit on the sizing of the accessory building. I know we've done that before, which is kind of, the whole thing's kind of odd, the percentage I find kind of odd.
So we currently, before this statute has come into effect, we only allow accessory dwellings up to fifty percent of their primary residence. So if you have a residence that's two thousand square foot, you could only build an accessory dwelling up to one thousand. But if you would like to build it larger, then it requires that special use permit. Any properties that are larger than five acres, we did not have that requirement. The state statute is requiring us to lift that from fifty percent to seventy-five percent.
But the other thing you could do is deem the new structure, the primary structure, as long as it was twice as big as the original structure.
We have had people do that, yes.
People are creative.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, do we have a motion in a second?
We do not.
Entertain a motion. Motion to approve, I have a motion in a second. I do have one discussion point, you're fast, you got over there quick. Is there an education component, is there a one-sheet or something that goes out to people so that we make them aware of these changes, Director Holtry?
Mr. Chair, we could definitely put something on our website and in our lobbies of the Development Services Building to kind of give them that update, yes.
Supervisor Barelli, do you have a comments?
Yes, my backup materials gone on my computer, but aren't we basically just getting in compliance with the state law that just changed?
Mr. Chair Supervisor Barelli, that is correct.
Yep. All right, we have a motion, a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, I appear to have it, do have it, so ordered, thank you. That was our last public hearing, we'll move to, no, excuse me, it was not our last public hearing. Item number fifty-four is our last public hearing and I'll open that up. Approve the adoption of Mojave County Ordinance number twenty-two-five dash zero-five requiring data centers in Mojave County to provide onsite energy and dry cooling technologies. We have a few people that have signed up to speak on this item during public hearing. First being Mr. Robert Hooper, if you'd come to the podium, please. State your name and your address for the record for our clerk. Mr. McClure, you're on deck.
Thank you, my name is Robert Hooper and I live at one-nine-nine-three-zero, South Diamondback Road in Yucca. And so, good morning, Chairman Legginsfelter, Supervisors and Manager Elters. Appreciate having time to talk to you today. And I appreciate Supervisor Gould, your interest in this area. This is a very important area, however, I do stand as written against this ordinance. So why am I, why do I feel that way? The ordinance document is sort of written in the way that the industry used to be, not the way it is right now. I don't talk against the intent, it's just, it's really not up to date. What I called pump and dump water is just not being used right now in the industry. Air cooling in itself as a sole method is being abandoned as well. It takes way too much power to do that. Combinations are there and fluids are there. That's kind of the new thing, is there's a circulating fluid. Imagine how it works in your refrigerator, okay? Same kind of thing, there's a dielectric fluid that they run over and through the computers that cool it. It's circulated, it's not dumped out. Comes back to the point that this regulation, as it's written right now, just doesn't reflect that. We don't want to say use air when the whole industry's not using air. In fact, they're actually refitting data centers right now. And I represent Soul Lake, Red Lake Six Forty LLC, and they like to see a data center put in there. And it's got some really nice energy. So talking about energy, the centers want to reduce energy. This piece of land has some interesting things on it where there's huge transmission lines that cross over and where power could be brought down, adding power to the grid, not taking it away. So again, the document doesn't quite cover that. What it does ask for is for alternative power such as solar, wind. But I know from experience that the county doesn't want to have square miles and miles and miles of solar panels up. It's just not a good answer to it, there's other ways to get there. Comes back to my main premise that the document doesn't really fit the way that the industry's moving right now. And it's a very important industry. It's a hundred and seventy-one point nine billion in total value in the U.S. Creates a lot of jobs, not more than it used to. So from an economics point of view, it's just something we don't want to scare away. And I'm afraid this document, when it's circulated out there and hollow out to when Atlanta, Georgia and other places, will be looked at as a deterrent to wanting to choose this county. From econometric modeling, it's a real important piece, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Scotty McClure.
Scotty from Bullhead. Why don't you just build these places down in Phoenix, there's one with all the water.
All our water.
All our water, thank you. Need to be corrected on that. And there, as long as this governor's in there, we're, our water's gone. You're not going to fight California for their water, so. You're not going to fight California for their water, so that's a no-brainer. Anyway, this, you know, I sit up here and I sit here hours on hours listening about things, whether it's Golden Valley and their water, and they deserve their own water. People are trying to steal it from them, and they fight each other over it. But our resources need to be protected. And you didn't do that two years ago. Do you remember the 3 billion project? The Beehive? Some of us were here in this room discussing that. We spent $800,000 on a road to nowhere, and that's a quote from Mr. Gould. He voted four to one. He was the only no vote. He tried to protect our resources on this project. And I'm just seeing all these other people coming up here, because we do have lots of land out there. We don't have the infrastructure. I'll be damned if I want. I mean, you got a thing here, we can't even, we got to buy a generator for a library? That's really good infrastructure, because they won't put up New, anyway, I'm getting on, that's the next one I signed up for. But for us to, we don't have the water. This was, Tammy, maybe you can get up here and maybe say why we had the need for this project to start with. They haven't been back. Oh, yeah. We had a self-help guru, Tony Robbins, and the Duchess of York, Sarah Ferguson, come up here and get their pictures in the front page of the paper. This is all by the Kingman Daily Miner. Okay, you know, I just got it from them, and, but we're going to get fleeced by these people again. We'll make you all this tax money, and we'll just supply you with all these jobs. It's a bunch of BS.
Kathy Tackett Hicks, you're on deck.
Morning, morning. Good morning, Chairman and Supervisors. I'm John Martel, Chief Operating Officer for Mojave Electric Cooperative in Bullhead City. I'm here today to oppose Item 54 as it's currently written. MEC feels that limiting data centers to only use onsite generation and not allowing utility to serve them will limit the economic benefits to our members. There are ways that MEC and other utilities can serve data centers and transfer the risk over to the data center, which will increase revenue for our members. Good example of this is Nucor Steel here in Kingman, contract we recently did with them. MEC does support the letter of availability concept that Supervisor Gould has in here, and we think it should be a viable option for all data centers, not just data centers up to the 10 megawatts. If the Supervisors would like, MEC would be happy to work with county staff on some edits to this ordinance that we feel will make this more acceptable to MEC. Those are on the electric, we're not going to touch the water issue, as it's not really our business. And I just thought, thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Good morning again, Honorable Chairman, Supervisors. My name is Kathy Tackett Hicks. I am working on the Entrata Project, your well of Mr. Al Barbarich. We have been looking at this ordinance. We do not support it in its current form. You're also all aware that the Entrata Project has been working on a proposed data center site within the industrial technology park of the Entrata Project for over a year and a half. And certainly, our project aligns with the spirit of this, which I understand is to protect the utilities and the water and those types of things. So I did put on your desk this morning a little memo, and it just kind of outlines what I'm going to say here, so you can draw back on it, as well as some information from the Assessor's Office. So there's just a few main things. First of all, the water. The Entrata Project already has a 100-year water adequacy determination, which includes all development within the technology and industrial park within Entrata, which can take care of the water use of this data center. And just for your edification, I will tell you that the water that ADWR allocated for the industrial use is more than what the data center is proposed to use. I think it's an interesting concept, because everyone thinks that the data centers are big water hogs. And the fact is, what the gentleman spoke before, there's lots of different technologies. So we got to look at all those. Anyways, so we believe that you need to expand this ordinance to allow for developers issued 100-year water adequacy determinations to take care of the water for a proposed project that they have. In addition, the power use, we understand, I was absolutely pleased to hear the last speaker talk about some of the utilities can in fact assist in data center management and working hand-in-hand with them. Although we do think it's unrealistic to think that any of our local utilities could actually provide a huge amount of energy for these. We also would like you to include the use of the federal power corridors, the WAPA lines. Those lines right there provide Southwest Region WAPA, Western Arizona Power Association, those are giant transmission lines that the government, federal government sells wholesale power to. That's what everybody uses. In this particular case, we already have some initial, initial, what do I want to say? Commitments for the necessary power to pull down from that line for our Entrata Project, so we would not be adversely impacting our utility companies. We think you should allow that option within this ordinance as well. And there's just another item, I would say, the only concern I have on SUP is, don't let the board allow for a clawback.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Jennifer Esposito, Kingman. I support this, but maybe if technology is changing, what we really need is a moratorium on building these through 2027? You know, because January of 2028, a new board will be seated, they could make a different decision. I know there's five people sitting up on this dais who are perfectly capable of asking AI or doing a simple Google search. So I did. And according to Grok, most data centers rely on water-intensive cooling methods like evaporative cooling towers or chillers, waters used to absorb and dissipate heat, with large facilities consuming millions of gallons annually. For example, a 2021 study estimated that a typical data center uses 300,000 to 600,000 gallons of water per day comparable to a small town. It's a lot of water. I would also like to point out that several cities, I think Chandler and Mesa and some other ones, have already restricted data centers in their zoning. Even the mayor of Phoenix, and I cannot believe that I agree with the Democrat mayor of Phoenix, but she has asked the legislature to look at removing all financial incentives in Arizona that are being provided to building these, because the whole thing, it's an antiquated system. She used the word antiquated, I don't know. But, you know, the thing is, is they do use a lot of power. They do use a lot of water. Now, maybe that's going to change, I don't know, in a couple of years, we could kick this can down the road. But right now, if the technology is using something that's water and power intensive, I think that we should take all steps that we can to protect the water and make sure that we're not draining power away from the current residents. Because, you know, if there isn't enough power to power these things, that's going to draw against the people who are already here. The last thing I want, you know, is for my house, for my power to go down in August on a triple-digit day. I don't know about you guys sitting up there, you know, have some kind of peak thing or some kind of issue where the power cannot handle the data center in the existing use. But then, as Scotty pointed out, we have the issue of the hive. We spent hundreds of thousands of dollars for a road to a data center that never materialized, went completely belly up, everybody pulled out. I think the guy went AWOL, he was on one of the county commissions as well. So maybe, I think this is a good first step, but we had a moratorium on the green energy thing. I think maybe what we need is a moratorium on this. The only people who benefit from this is the property owner who leases or sells to the data center. And although there is some tax revenue, it doesn't provide local jobs. Long-term, this isn't the best use of our land for the benefit of everyone, for the county. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak during the public hearing on Item Number 54? Going once, going twice. I'm going to close the public hearing on Item Number 54. Supervisor Gould, put this on the agenda. Supervisor Gould, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisors, I brought this forward over concern about excessive water use and excessive electricity use. I had a phone call from Tyler Carlson of MEC, which kind of kicked it off, and he had, somebody who was interested in building a data center in the Golden Shores area. And he told me that the amount of electricity that that person was requesting was more than the peak load of MEC's entire system. That was concerning. The lack of, the water use is concerning also. I don't want our folks to be sitting here with no water and no electricity in the middle of summer. I think that's a bad way to play, and we have a duty to protect them from that happening. What I brought forward is not the final product. I'm more than happy to take a look at what needs to be changed, but we have to start somewhere. I didn't expect a vote today, because we have to start somewhere. I've worked with Kathy Tackett Hicks, worked with MEC, worked with Mr. Hooper on things that were, that we needed to change. The size of the data center that I have listed in there is too small. You know, it's just, it's an unrealistic number. As far, if technology is going to change, we can move fairly fast. We're not amending the United States Constitution here. It's just that it's an ordinance. In 30 days, we can amend an ordinance if we have to, if a new technology comes up. But I need to, we have to get started someplace. There may be places inside the county that are appropriate for data centers. But I think that, and the ordinance, the model ordinance provides for waivers for those locations that will give us some control. It also gives us the ability to get in there and actually look and see how much water are they using, because that was not what was happening in other areas of the country. You had to sue Google and the city, in a city in Oregon, to find out how much water they were using. To me, that's unacceptable. Everybody's become socialist on water, just the way that water works nowadays. Nobody really owns the water, we all seem to have joint ownership in it. But if, we can't determine how much water you're using, we don't have a way to get in there and do anything about it, then we're really just, we just threw open the barn doors. But I think we need to do something. We need to do something that's smart, and we need to remember that what we do is not written in stone, and that we can change it. Thank you, members.
Thank you. Supervisor Burley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And Supervisor Gould, I'm really glad that you're, you said that, because you're, this is not set in stone. This is just a beginning product. We both agree that regulations are supposed to be fair and equal and balanced, not restrictive. It's supposed to make regular. And I'm really glad that you're ruling to listen to MEC and have a conversation with Ms. Hicks. And you're right, because this is not written in stone, we can always change it. But to be able to collaborate with the energy sources and, you know, finding out all that stuff, I think the way this thing is written is technically premature, but the willingness to be open, to come up with a product that protects Mojave County, this is, it's a start.
Supervisor Martin?
Yes, my comment is this. I've met with the people that are in the know on this, and this regulation is written, there's no way I could support it. I agree that we need to do something. This particular regulation proposal is not what we need. There's a lot more information out there. I've heard speakers talk about the water, and some of the systems that I've heard about that require any water. So, and the power issue, I don't know about all the data centers. I know about the one in Entrata. They're getting power from Nevada off the line, would definitely not impact any local power. So, you know, I agree, we need to look at this, but the way this particular thing is written, I can't, I can't support it. And Supervisor Gould wants to go back, come back, and after meeting with all these people, I met with them, and they had all this information. So if he can bring back to the table a updated proposal, I mean, you know, I see the need for it, but not the way this one's written. So I can't support it.
Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Lebman, thank you.
I think directionally, this ordinance is headed in the right way. I'm with Supervisor Martin. I would have a lot of issues with supporting it the way it's written. I looked at this in two separate areas. First of all, I think there's water usage, which is a finite resource, and it's finite. Energy is not finite. And that, and I think we need to approach both of them two different ways. I'm still not sure, after spending a good amount of time over the week on the internet, how much energy does a data center actually use? I'm still not sure on that. The current cooling technologies, that appears to be in flux. I'm not even sure how many jobs a data center brings, and I think the operation of a data center is very few, okay? And I think that needs to be taken into consideration on this. Obviously, the construction jobs are important. I had just marked up on my own over the weekend, there were some items in the internal, and by the way, I appreciate Supervisor Gould's willingness to move on this. I think that's correct. And that's, this is a work in progress, and directionally, it's headed the right way. I just had some, few items in there. I wrote to myself, how many data centers actually operate on renewable energy? And I couldn't find a single one, okay, that I was doing. I was curious about the role of the Arizona Corporation Commission in this, what part they would play. Some other notes I'd written to myself, future technology, again, there was a thing, an area in Section 1, the definitions and the letter of availability, and it made a note that there would have to be a letter from a local power utility company stating the utility is able to sustainably maintain the power required before the proposed data center without putting undue strain on the power grid. And I'm not sure how you define undue strain. So there's, there's a number of definitions that are required. The whole letter of availability concept, I think, is good. I think the best people to tell me whether or not we have enough energy is the energy provider, okay, in this case, whether it's WAPA or one of the local utilities. There was a section on renewable water systems again, and said the ordinance would, that the operator has to show that they're capable of fulfilling at least 75% of the data center's water cooling demands through recycled or reused water. And my question to myself was, how did we come up with 75%? Why not 50? Why not 80? Where did we come up with that number from? And, yeah, and I'd just like to see more data behind it, as part of the process of trying to understand how to work through this. So I wouldn't support it in its current role. I would certainly like to see this continued, okay? I would enjoy very much, for my own edification, a work session, okay, on this, whether or not it's open to all supervisors. I need to learn a lot more about this, but I agree with the basic concept, which is some guardrails need to be put around data centers. I agree with that.
Supervisor Gould, I appreciate you as the item sponsor, your flexibility, your willingness to work to get to a point that's agreeable to, with the utility providers, that I would support you working with all those folks and bringing something back with, like you said, you have to start somewhere.
Sure.
And you may not get it right, you know, the very first time, but this is something that I think that is necessary. So I'd like to see it continue to evolve.
Thank you. I don't know, can I continue this to an unspecified future date?
Mr. Chair, I was just going to recommend that we take no action on this to allow it to, basically, we'll come back with further discussion, and then when Supervisor Gould is ready, we can set a public hearing and do it. is ready, we can set a public hearing and do it that way.
Okay.
Supervisor Gould, is that good with you?
That works for me, sir.
Any other discussion before we continue?
Looks like Director.
Come on up.
Director Holtry.
Sorry, I just wanted, thank you, Chairman Lingefelter. I just wanted to let the board know that my planning and zoning staff looked at this as well and realized in our zoning ordinance, we don't have data centers. The ordinance was written quite some time ago. So, we want to put data centers in our ordinance, and I don't know if this would help the discussion, but we are planning on putting it as a special use permit requirement for any industrial zone. So, what that would require is any data center that wants to come into the county would have to apply for that special use permit that would go before the commission and the board, where we can require any data or any information from that data center that wants to come in to present to the board, and then the board would make a decision on a case-by-case basis. But essentially, that, what that will do is it will require any data center coming into the county to have to go through that special use permit. We are currently proposing that, I think, on our next Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and then it will come to the board. I just wanted to make you aware that that's an ordinance that we are looking to change in the zoning ordinance.
Director Holtry, may I ask you a follow-up question on that? There's 15 counties in Arizona. You're proposing it to be handled under an SUP. How do the other 14 counties handle it? Because I know that there's data centers other places.
Mr. Chair, that's a great question.
SUP or different?
Mr. Chair, that's a great question. I think everybody is in the same boat where we're all kind of looking. I just got an inquiry from another jurisdiction, from Pima County, because they're looking to make changes themselves. And so, they looked at, they saw that we were creating an ordinance and then maybe changing our special use permit requirements. So, I, we will do some research and check with other counties to see what they're doing. I think a lot of them are in the same boat that we are, that we're trying to create some regulation for it.
Supervisor Levittman, thank you.
Director Holtry, so you're suggesting an ordinance for an SUP around these. So Supervisor Gould's ordinance clearly has metrics in it. So, I'm assuming that the ordinance you would be proposing would have metrics in it also, correct?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Lingefelter, and Supervisor Levittman, ours would not have metrics. It would be in our, it would support the ordinance that you guys are looking at creating so that when a data center wants to come in, we would have those metrics that they would be required to present to the commission and the board. Ours is simply making it so they can't just automatically go to that location and start construction. It would require them to pause, apply for the special use permit, present to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and present to the Board of Supervisors. Whether or not we have an ordinance that has requirements on it, the, or not, this would still get them to pause, and then if there is some metrics that the county comes up with, they would have to present that at that time.
So, you would still need to establish criteria for approval of the special use permit. How do you do that without metrics? Unless you're relying on another ordinance for the metrics.
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Levittman, so currently, our zoning ordinance has uses that are allowed by right in every zone. And essentially, we still have metrics for all commercial development within the county that they have to meet those commercial standards. What the special use permit is, is it's a, it makes it so it's not an allowed use by right. It makes it so it has to come to a public hearing. It has to be heard by the commission, it has to be heard by the board. And the board or the commission can set specific conditions or standards that they would like to see for that development. It's not, they don't have specific standards. For example, in our commercial zone, we allow for commercial uses like restaurants, but if you wanted to have an RV park, you would have to apply for that special use permit. And then the board can come in and say, okay, we approve this, but you got to put up a view of security fence around the outside from the separate properties. So, it allows the board or the commission to put specific conditions that they would like to see on that development with, to get that approval.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Attorney Davis.
Yeah, so to clarify a little bit more perhaps for Supervisor Levittman, where I believe a lot of these requirements in this draft ordinance before us would go is in sort of site plans, when they go before planning and zoning for everything they need, for administrative that they'd have to show in the site plan that they have had this, 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 and this. But then if they wanted to build generally, then they'd have to get a special use permit so that they could proceed underway that way. So, it would be a two-pronged approach.
Supervisor Gould, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Holtry, currently, under our existing zoning scheme, where could you put a data center?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Gould, we looked at it, and we believe it falls under the industrial, any industrial zone that we currently have, we would allow for that data center. Basically, we don't have a definition for a data center in our zoning ordinance, but it aligns with some of the uses within any of our industrial zones.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. So, that motion is just going to, no action taken?
Correct, no action.
All right, thank you. We'll move to item number 55. Thank you, Board. Regular agenda, sitting as the Board of Directors for the Mojave County Library District for consideration and possible action. Approve appropriation of $12,000 from Library District contingency to Library Fund for purchase and installation of a new 22-kilowatt generator and automatic transfer switch to power the Meadview Library at 149 Meadview Boulevard during instances of power outages. We have one person sign up to speak. Mr. McClure, if you'd like to come up to the podium. Thank you.
I hear they're having a few outages up there as a reason why they're asking for this. Why didn't the power company, I don't know who's up there, and I don't care who's up there, why don't they supply them with decent telephone poles going to this place? Now, if this library has a place where if they have an outage or something like we had in Bullhead, that they used it as a Red Cross shelter or something, that might be different. There's nothing in here that says that. This is just to keep the lights on five days a week? $22,000 more dollars. I mean, you're not watching your money again. It's the electric company's problem, should be. Now, like I say, if it was an emergency shelter, I'd go for this. They're pretty handy. Like, in Bullhead, we had nothing down there. And I almost died that frigging goddamn day that Toby Carter didn't have anything available. And the cops were too stupid down there to direct traffic. We had a nightmare. I've never seen traffic even in a 405 freeway that bad.
Director Lottowski, would you like to come up and just give a brief overview of this project?
Chairman Lingefelter, members of the board, this item follows a couple of power outages that the greater Meadview area realized in the course of the summer, particularly the one that came out of late July. It was brought to staff's attention that there was no county facilities that could double as a cooling center during a power outage. And the only county facility that we have is the Meadview Library Station. It's a fairly small building, only a level of 1,400 square feet, a capacity of 21 persons, but it does have a nice, a little community porch area that, you know, can, you know, house a few people. When this was brought to staff's attention, the immediate thought was this was going to be several tens of thousands of dollars. But collaborating with our facility staff, Butch Finkbinder did some research and found that we can probably land on getting a generator that would power the facility's lights and HVAC system at about $12,000. That's actually a level of funding that is just too small to pursue through emergency grant funds, et cetera. So, hence, we're bringing this item to the board. And I do apologize, I should have put this in the motion, actually, that the purpose of this was to facilitate the, you know, potential cooling center type operation, should the need exist.
Thank you. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Lottowski, that was going to be my question, is can we use this as a cooling station? What are you going to fuel it on?
Chairman Lingefelter, Supervisor Gould, I take it it would be fueled based on diesel fuel.
Okay, I don't think, I don't, in this situation, even if they had natural gas, if we had a disaster similar to this one, you may knock, it may knock out the gas line too, and then you couldn't run the generator.
I fully expect to be a portable fuel.
Yeah, even though diesel is a hassle, in this case, I think it's warranted that it runs on diesel. That's big enough to run the air conditioning also in the library?
Supervisor Gould, I can attest that it is the capacity to run the air conditioning. Again, the fuel, I don't have the generator specs in front of me, but I presume it's, it would be like a diesel fuel.
Okay. Since the Labor Day windstorm that took out the power in Bullhead City and for Mojave, I've been concerned that people in the county don't have a portable generator and a room air conditioner. That happened in the summertime. There's people that cannot handle our heat, especially along the river, but they really need to be prepared for things. You can't always count on the government to help you, and you can't help on the utility to be able to help you. You need to prepare for yourself. For about $1,000, you can probably get a room air conditioner and a generator that'll run that. And propane was probably the way to go, just because you don't have the storage issues that you do with gasoline. But that way, you can keep, you can keep yourself cool, at least one room in your house cool. You can keep your refrigerator running so you don't, so you don't lose your food. I had people calling my office that were out of food the day after the power went out. You know, and which is rather pitiful when you think about it, because I don't know if they're picking food up on the way home from work or, you know, for that night's meal, but you need to be more prepared than that. We're somewhat isolated, so it wouldn't take that much of a disaster to knock the power out for the area. And, but I think air conditioning and a generator and fuel to run the generator is important, and people should begin to think about that. Thank you, Board.
Good information. Thank you. Supervisor Martin.
Yes, this issue came up out of people in Meadview contacting me and asking, because they don't have an emergency center up there, and they were looking for something where, you know, in a downright emergency, they could go and survive. And while this only is 21 people, as Director Lottowski said, it is something. And, you know, Meadview community is mostly retired people. They're older people. That's not a young person's community up there. So, anything that we can do to keep something available to people, absolutely support. I know that the organizations up there are looking on their own to get a community emergency power system, but this is a good start. And this would be something that in a downright emergency, and boy, Meadview seems to get a bunch of them recently, it's a good deal. And I'm glad that Director Lottowski pursued this, and it's, this is a great start. It's something that's needed up there because of the isolation factor. So, I'm entirely in support of this.
Additional discussion or entertaining motion?
Motion.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
That motion, I have a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it. Do have it, so order it. Thank you. Item number 56, discussion, possible action. Approve a recruitment plan for the county manager position and provide directions for staff to move forward. Manager Elters, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. The job descriptions have been revised and updated in accordance with the direction from the board. We also asked for and received feedback regarding priorities for board members to be integrated into the job description. That is done. It's ready to go. And this item's on the agenda today, asking for concurrence from the board to proceed with the recruitment, along with the timeline that we discussed with you, and one that will honor the commitment that made to bring this to the board in early January and complete the process by the target timeline of January 31st, understanding that there will be flexibility along the way, should that be necessary. So, we're asking you just for concurrence with the understanding that what you directed staff to do is done, and the feedback that you provided is integrated into the job description and the qualities desired by the board in this person.
Thank you, county manager. Can we get you to give us a brief interview or overview of what we've come up with for ourselves and for the public?
Mr. Chairman and board members, the, as I said, the job descriptions have been updated to reflect current practices, what we received from the board in specific related to special qualities and special qualifications. We have packaged those in the job description as key challenges and opportunities, and they pertain to the ability and willingness to take a look at the current operation in various departments and reorganize or take initiative to reorganize where necessary, also pertains to economic development and greater focus on retention and expansion, as well as the board's desire to explore zero-based budgeting going forward. So, we made those, we included those specifically as key challenges and opportunities for us to ask about, evaluate, and for the board to ask about and consider when the board interviews the candidates that the board decides to interview. Did I answer your question, was there anything else that you were looking for?
I do have a question. It looks like the supervisor selections still run through the interview panel. And I'm not sure that was the intent.
The, the final direction that we got from the board was that you, the board members, would receive all the applications for the applicants. Each of you would select up to a certain number. You would, you would send that. You would make your selection clear. HR would act on that and send it to the panel, and the panel would only interview the candidates that the board members selected and sent to them. They would rank those, the interviews, and send it to you, the board, and then you would, I, I'm, I don't have it in front of me. In a nutshell, I, the Board of Supervisors will look at what they get back from the panel and decide who you want to interview, and then who you actually select as your next county manager supervisor. That's the intent.
Thank you. Supervisor Levittman, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. In step number seven, the final step, the clerk will refer the selected candidate human resources, and in the final step, we're going to do reference checks and background checks. I would recommend that the background checks and reference checks probably be done before the final step. I was just noting, our friends in Des Moines, Iowa had a recent occurrence with the school superintendent that they just didn't do correctly. And I would like to see that certainly done before the final step, and especially if we were considering expending, giving candidate travel expenses to come out and see us. They should pass all of that before we bring anybody out here. I had another question. On week, the proposed timeline on weeks 10 through 14, is a month really enough? It could be. For the initial interviews to be done, the final to be done, the final interviews by the Board of Supervisors and contract negotiations? Is four weeks enough for that? I mean, it's a proposed, I guess we could go over it. That just seems awfully short.
Um, Mr. Chairman and Board members, usually when we open these recruitment processes, um, we will do everything we can to get the word out, and we collect applications as they arrive and then forward them for processing. Um, the truth is, we, um, started with the intent of having a recommendation to the board, to you in January. And so, we worked our way backward to look at the timelines for, uh, the applicant, the recruitment period to be open and then for interviews to take place. Keep it in mind that you, the board, will be interviewing and your schedules and the end of the year holidays and so on. So, a, a month is a reasonable timeline. At the end of the day, if we, if somebody, if an application came in late in the game and it, it warrants, um, forwarding it to you for consideration and it delays the process by a week or two, we understand that we're just, we have a target date and we will, you know, we'll keep you on the loop. We'll keep you informed. If it needs to be delayed, we will delay it.
Thank you for that. Supervisor Barelli, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And to that point, Mr. Elters, so the, uh, 14 November deadline is, is, uh, not set in stone?
Mr. Chairman and Board members, truly nothing is set in stone, other than what we told you we would do, and we're asking you to approve it today. If in the process something changes, we're going to come back to you, make you aware of it, ask you for whatever change and get your buy-in before we act on it, all the way through until you interview and you hire and we, um, we accomplish the transition period that you would, that you've made it clear you would like to see.
Any other comments or discussion from the board? I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
For that motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it. Do have it, so ordered. Item number 57, discussion, possible action, receive advice from the board's attorneys regarding scoping comments for the Queen Creek, uh, water transfer environmental impact study. Open it up to the board.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould, thank you.
I move that the county attorney's office and the chairman move forward with advice garnered in executive session.
Thank you for that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it. Do have it, so ordered. Thank you.
Two motions.
Item number 58.
We're good.
Um, so that one, that, that item was dealing with the Queen Creek, uh, water transfer?
We got one item. You want me to make that?
Okay, we're going to move on to item number 58. Ratify the declaration of flood emergency signed by the chairman of the board on September 30th, 2025, for a series of strong rainstorms and resulting flooding between September 26th and December 28th, 2025, that caused extensive damage and loss of county road and flood control infrastructure. Director Lattoski, do you want to give an overview on item number 58?
Just briefly, thank you. Yes, Chairman Leonveldter, members of the board, um, between the time period, September 26th, that was a Friday through a Sunday, as of September 28th, uh, Mojave County did see a series of, uh, largely isolated, yet, uh, very impactful storms, uh, countywide, uh, most of which, uh, caused damage, uh, widespread damage across the Meadview communities as well as Fort Mojave communities. And to a little bit limited extent, uh, the Oatman and the Golden Valley communities, I gotta give, uh, the community of Oatman, uh, you know, a lot of credit, uh, they responded, uh, very, very rapidly amongst the, uh, the community themselves. But on the roadside, uh, we did see a substantial amount of, uh, paved and unpaved roads impacted in Meadview and, uh, Fort Mojave. But, uh, I gotta say, uh, our crew led by Road Superintendent Steve Vest, Traffic Control Supervisor, uh, J.T. Casanova, uh, they were really on the ball. I mean, they, uh, we responded in such a manner, uh, along with our emergency management team, Mike Browning, Lauren Walburn, Ashley Thien. We completed our damage assessment within four days. Uh, that's almost unheard of. Uh, we were in constant communications with DEMA from, uh, from Monday morning on through last week and into this week. DEMA will have a preliminary, uh, damage assessment team out here tomorrow, uh, through Wednesday. They just want to get their own eyes on the damage that we have reported, but I don't know if we can get this up on the screen real quick, but just a, a testament to our road crews, uh, because they were working nonstop last week. They're going to have a couple of more, two, three weeks of work left remaining, but this is just an example of, uh, what they were able to put back together on Pierce Ferry Road. We see a substantial culvert crossing, uh, a tremendous amount of downstream erosion on the downstream side of the culvert, and they just put it back together, uh, within, you know, just moments' time, uh, after this, uh, substantial storm event. We're estimating a staff about 1.538 million dollars, uh, worth of, uh, damage that's attributed to just the debris removal and recovery, as well as some, uh, 13 sites of asphalt roads, uh, that have to be reconstructed, another 28 sites of unsurfaced roads that have to be, I call it replated, aggregate brought in and replating them. Uh, and flood control also has a, a, a flood control channel, uh, up in Meadview, uh, where the concrete lining was disturbed. That repair is estimated $110,000. And we have an assorted, uh, amount of traffic control signs that need be replacing, but that, that in summary is, uh, from the event of, uh, September 26th, 28th.
Thank you. Any comments from the board? Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Lattoski, I just wanted to take this opportunity to tell you what a wonderful job the road department does on getting roads cleaned up after storms. Um, the, a couple months, a month or two ago, Alamo Road flooded. I sent, I got through, but my wife did not. I, it's about seven o'clock at night, I send Director Lattoski an email just letting him know I was going into the no cell zone, because we had motors that were stuck there, and I was going to go try to help. By the time I got to, I, uh, where the people were stuck, I got out of my truck, looked around, and the road crew showed up. That was, that was how fast these, these guys were. So, I wanted to commend you. They did a, um, great job in the two storms we've had in Fort Mojave. Um, they clean up arterial roads first, then they're cleaning up residential roads. So, the, the folks need to understand that we need to make them passable first, and then we'll come back and clean them up, and then we'll come back and sweep them. But, but the main thing is that they're passable, that people can get through them, and they've done an outstanding job. I just want to commend them again.
Thank you very much.
Director, I would also, I'd, I'd echo those comments. It's always amazed me how, with little crew and equipment that you have, what you're able to do in such a big county. It's pretty impressive. Supervisor Martin?
Yes, uh, Meadview got hit the hardest. And, uh, I mean, we were, I say we, the county and, and Steve and, and those crews. I, I was up there to the, the next day. It happened at Friday night. I was there Saturday morning. I was there for three days up there. I, I helped bring water into the community and, and get that taken care of. But the road crews and that I saw up there all along were just nothing short of, of remarkable. I couldn't believe how quickly they got stuff done up there. They're still doing stuff up there, and, uh, as I've told our, our people, hey, we got thousands of miles that got damaged up there, all over the county, and it's going to take some time before it's all done. And, but the, but Steve and his crew, I called him up, I don't know, probably a dozen times, and after hours, and brought to his attention things that were going on, and they were right up on top of it. And I mean, uh, you know, everything that needed to be done. They got stuff open, passable, and, you know, the main arterial stuff, Stockton Hill Road, Pierce Sherry Road, those things, they got them, I mean, you know, here they happened 12 hours before, and those roads were passable. People could get back and forth. So, it was vitally important, and it just shows the dedication, I think, of our staff that works for County. They got out there and, and got it done. And everybody else, I think, on the board saw that too in their areas. So, kudos to Steve and your group. Uh, I don't know anybody could have done it better than what you did. And like I say, I know you got a lot of work in front of you, but from my point of view, from my personal point of view, thank you very much for doing what you did for the citizens of Mojave County.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you, Supervisor. Uh, I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it. Do have it, so ordered. Thank you. Item number 59, discussion, possible action, receive advice from the board's attorneys regarding the Mojave County Airport Authority leases. I'd open it up to the board.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould, thank you.
Um, I move that the county attorney's office and the chairman move forward on advice received in executive session.
Thank you for that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it. Do have it, so ordered. Thank you. I'll move into the call to the public. Our first speaker this morning, or excuse me, this afternoon is Eduardo Fuller. Jim? Speak your name and address into the record for our clerk. Thank you.
Uh, good afternoon, Chairman and Board. Uh, my name is Eduardo Fuller. I go by Jim. Made a big mistake. Board and citizens, supervisor, I live in, uh, Rancho Vista Drive in Lake Havasu. I'm here today to ask forgiveness for my drunk driving that I got on May 26th this year. Getting behind my car steering wheel loaded is no different than having a loaded gun, and it, and it won't happen again. I'll assure you that. As a GOP voter, I'm sorry for my bad judgment. I let many GOP friends down, to name a few, Robbie Adams, Jenny Kench, Gina Savota, Caroline Stretcher, hopefully our next congressman, Latias Suean, Valerie, uh, the Trump guys that I rallied with, Denny and Tommy, Curtis, and many more. Well, I rightly earned a ticket to the birdcage in the Mojave County jail, right over here next door. Landing on August 8th, I had to work in this pod, Pod G. It's a working pod. Everybody works there. I worked cleaning the place. A lot of guys go work, uh, on the road and, and cooking. Uh, the pod, this is a pod which I did. We had a detention officer named, uh, Officer Walsh, and every, everybody loved this guy. He helped me. Uh, he, he started by helping me exchange my Forex. I think it was more like a 6X, boxers, uh, about this big. And he, he had a pretty good laugh. I think everybody laughed at that. I'm not quite that big. Walsh was just an awesome, kind guy. I also thank, uh, Nurse Maria for helping me. I had a little problem while I was in there, and she went out of her way to help me. And she's got like 400 people to take care of in that place. I got to share my faith with a lot of people there. I took one guy on, Matthew, that I'm helping now. He's in rehab in Prescott. I'm hoping that he can, uh, change, and he wants to change his way of life. And he's a local guy from right here in Keighman. He's, I believe he's 36 years old. And, and, and I was the old guy, 75, and there was a young guy in there that I also preached to him about leaving drugs alone. But I thank you for your time, and I hope that we can help these guys out, not to repeat their ways.
Thank you, sir. Zandera Henninger? Come down and speak your name and, uh, your address for our clerk. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Andrea Henninger, and I reside at 1826 East Camino, Colorado, in Fort Mojave, Arizona. We have lived in our home for over 14 years. My husband, who's in the audience, has also built this house with his hands in 2002. It was our dream, our safe place where we raised our five children and built a lifetime of memories from more than a decade. Never once have we ever had a flood. Then Mountain View Road was constructed in Fort Mojave, Arizona, as well as a couple of other developments. The construction completely altered how the rain flow flows. Now every time it rains, the water doesn't drain away. It rushes straight towards our home. It pours into our yard, into the very rooms that our children sleeps, while we stand outside in the high deep water, wondering if we're going to be able to go in, wonder if anything is going to survive. In the past six months alone, our home was flooded twice. The first time we were told it was the 100-year storm. But when it happened again, just months later, it became clear that this is an act of nature. It's an act of floor planning. The financial damage is devastating, over $100,000 in damages, but the emotional damage runs much deeper. My children feel, my, my children do not feel safe in their own home anymore. When they see rain in the forecast, they cry and ask me if it's going to flood again. As parents, that's painful that you can't fix the, that's a pain you cannot fix with insurance or repairs. We lost our peace of mind. We lost our security, and now we're at a risk of losing our flood insurance, a policy we've held since 2002 without a single claim until this year. Now we have two. I know permanent drainage redesigns take time, and I'm not asking for miracles overnight, but I'm asking for action now. Something temporary, something that can stop the next flood, but before it destroys us again, which is supposed to be coming again this weekend. There are practical, immediate steps that can make a real difference. A concrete barrier to slow redirection of water before it hits any of the properties, a large retention pit in the middle of the desert, which we clearly have, or even just barriers along the sides of the roads. Commissioners, please see what we are coming and living through. Come to my yard. Come see how we are living. Come see the devastation that has not only caused myself and my family, but the neighbors that live near us. We are asking for your guys' help to resolve this problem and try to come up with a solution as quickly as possible. My children were not able to stay in our home for over five months because we had no kitchen. We had no nothing. Like, my husband and I were trying to fix the house while we were getting this taken care of. We had water up to our knees. We had mud filling our walls, and now there's nothing that we can do but sit here and pray and hope that it doesn't happen again, and ask for your guys' help. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that, is that something that, um, any one of our board members would like to refer to staff to look into? Would you like to make that?
Yeah, it needs to be referred to staff.
Thank you. Lloyd May, could you come down to the podium? State your name and address.
My name is Lloyd May. I live at 4683 South Labiqueza in Fort Mojave. And I, I can just about relate to what you just said. Uh, I, I've been there 16 years, and I've never seen water come down our road like it now. And they built, uh, Camp Mojave Road, when they, when they extended it, they put barriers up there to divert the water off of Camp Mojave, uh, 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 Mountain, I'm sorry, Mountain View. When they, when they just redone Mountain View, they put a barrier on, on, uh, Camp Mojave to redirect the water over underneath that new bridge that they just built there. And all that water that, evidently, they didn't, they didn't allow for what was going to happen on the other end of it. They was worried about what was going to happen on their little bridge or their new road or whatever they was going to do up there. And I, I was visited by the, I was visited by the, uh, by the flood control guy, and he informed me that he used to be a school teacher here in Keighman. Now, he's, he's, he's the head of the flood control now. So, I said, well, he said, well, you put that barrier up over there, and you, you, we can't, we can't divert, oh, excuse me, we can't divert the water away from our property to keep from going, like she said, going in her house. And she had, I, I live right next door to her. She had four foot of water inside her house. And we, and, uh, the flood control guy said, well, if you do that, they can sue you. But everybody else could do it. Now, they diverted the water off of Camp Mojave, down, down around the fire department to get, so it wouldn't go through their doors, but we can't do it. And I just want to know if you guys could do something about it. And so, Saturday, I went up to the end of Camp Mojave Road and Sunrise Vista, thousands of people up there. They build a big, 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 they, they build a big, they build a big moat up there, and it's open on both ends. So, when that moat gets full of water, where does the water go? So when that moat gets full of water, where does the water go? It goes to the south, and that all comes down on Camp Mojave Road. So I'd like to see you guys do something about it, because I'm running out of money. You know, you guys, I hate to say this, but, you know, I live on the street that they live on, it's a private road. So I called the county and I said, hey, can you guys bring some dirt up there and fill that hole up? Because there was a five-foot dip in it where the water comes across out of that drainage dish up there, it washed out the road. But no, it's a private road, we can't do anything about it. But you guys should take my taxes, I get nothing for it. I get absolutely nothing from the county for my taxes. That's all I got to say. I just hope you guys can do, can do something about it, because these people here, all these people here have damage to their house, I mean, major damage to their house, and we're all footing the bill out of our own pocket, and the county does nothing for us. They cleaned the roads. I will guarantee you one thing, they did clean the roads, but they didn't help us any. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Wendell Say. I'm, live at, in Fort Mojave at 1956 East Phil Dorro Place. We've had a couple storms that affected my neighbors dramatically. Our street is right behind Mountain View, and my house is kind of on top of the grade. The grade goes all the way down to the post office block. Probably about four blocks, maybe. Behind these people's houses, you have an irrigation runoff that comes back there, and it goes no place. There's no diversion, and it runs right through our property. They come and they fix the roads, we asked them about that, they say, well, we don't have anything to do with that, no jurisdictions to do with the drainage. But all across Mountain View, and all the way down, if you go down and look, you got crews out there working for these people, and the people in my neighborhood aren't getting anything. So we're just asking for a little bit of fairness out here in Fort Mojave. These people, we've all taken care of our properties, we don't ask outside help, we just do it on ourselves, and this is getting pretty heavy. We're losing our homes. That's pretty frightening, and we're asking for some help. So any attention that you guys can bring to this would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Good afternoon, thank you for the time. You know, I was going to talk about how bad we have it in Golden Valley with the roads being the way that they are, but big stories here, they take precedence, man. I can't, I don't want to put anything on your plate after that. This needs to be attended to, you know? It sounds pretty drastic. I'm on board, I'll go help. However, we also too have similar situations, like Don Martin was saying, thousands of miles of roads to repair every time it rains. I mean, that's, to me, that's hard to comprehend. Every time it rains, thousands of miles of roads to clear up and make right again. It would seem that maybe we should start focusing on better ways to repair the road or to build them to a point where repairs won't be necessary next time, especially in a situation like that. I thought we were not allowed to divert the direction of runoff water, and it sounds like that's exactly what happened over there. And that's exactly what, that we're up against in Golden Valley if they, you hear all this talk about new building, new building, we need more and more homes and apartments and duplexes. Oh my God, you know, wait a minute, let's take care of what we have first, is my opinion. You know, the power, the water, every time a developer comes in here, and we bring, the community brings up the idea, well, what about the water, man? You know, there's not, not a lot of water. And then they, oh, no, 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 I was told that there's plenty. And then we come back and we say, no, there's not enough, and then the developer says, no, there's plenty. And so isn't there a way to nail it down so that we know, so that the next time we, someone brings an idea to you guys, we know about the water? I mean, there's got to be a way, somebody knows. I know I don't, and I'm not a researcher or developer or anything, but my goodness. You can't divert water like that, and you can't just give permits out for people that have no plan, especially with runoff water in the future. I mean, they can't just divert it to the next neighborhood as they've done over here, and that's not right. And so thank you for your time, I appreciate the time, and, oh, any, bye, I'm sorry. Art Ramos from Golden Valley, Arizona, right there on Aguafria.
Thank you.
Scotty from Bullhead. How come Jennifer always gets to go last? I don't know who the heck you guys hired for this Fort Mountain View and Fort Mojave thing. Whoever was the engineer ought to never work for us again. They ought to be, I can't say what I think they should do to them, but you should never hire this firm again if they're at fault. Mother Nature is kind of weird when it comes to water. I was flooded out in 1964, and it was a thousand-year waterfall. Okay, yeah, BS, it's still happening. I'm not going to ask for call of the, call of the public to the, in front of the meeting, because we're going to, in January, you're going to select a new, probably Ron, he should be next in line, so, and I know he's going to ask for you guys to give us, there's hardly anybody here, if it wasn't for this flood, there wouldn't be only about two or three of us again. You've taken away our free speech from some of these people that used to come here. We'll discuss that in January. I got a problem, I've attended a whole bunch of courthouse hearings, and I can't hear half of the crap that goes on over at these courthouses. You build million-dollar homes or courthouse, you fix it up, and you can't hear half the crap, and they give you these headphone things, they're junk, made in China or Japan or whatever. I had three trials over there in Bullhead City, lost all three of them because I couldn't These hearing aids here are perfect. I can go to the bathroom or out to my car in the parking lot and still listen to you guys in the meeting. But you, you got that courthouse over there on the third floor, that little bitty one over there, I couldn't hear half of that. And I was at that meeting where you guys were, he couldn't hear either, the guy you were trying, you know who he is. And then the one over in Bullhead City at the Superior Court, you can't hear over there either. That was the guy that broke into my house. I wanted to attend a meeting and, you know, visual, and I did, and I only heard half of it. I attended his sentence, only heard half of it. I guess he got three years, whatever. You need to give us hearing. I demand that you do something with this, especially that little courthouse in Bullhead City. I lost all three of them because I couldn't hear. Kangaroo court there in Bullhead City, run by a bunch of kangaroos anyway. And now we lost our paper, we're down to one day a week. And I suggest you, they've broken your thing you had with them, you need to redo the contract with them, since we're only down to one day a week.
Jennifer Esposito, 3211 East Nigley Avenue, Kingman. I would like to thank Supervisor Gould for making the motion to read the Charlie Kirk proclamation into the record as a former Turning Point Action employee. I think that was a very good thing to do. I think that the reason that Charlie Kirk was so effective is because of the way that he treated his opposition, and I think it's something this board should take note of. He went to college campuses, and he allowed people that couldn't stand him to come to the microphone and speak. What he never did was cut off their microphone. He never said, I want this person banned from coming back. You know, he addressed the specifics of their statements and their questions in a polite and respectful manner, because it was his event, and he had the floor, and he paid for the mics and all of that. But this board has, in the past, turned my microphone off in violation of open meeting law, conspired to ban people permanently from speaking at call to the public, which they were told by legal counsel, properly so, that you can't do that. I think it was Buster Johnson on his way out who lamented at the time. So basically, they can come to the podium for three minutes and play the bagpipes then, right? Yeah, I don't play the bagpipes. But I did come and sing for the board once, just to prove the point, that when people come to this podium, and they are recognized, and they sign up to speak, it's their three minutes to say anything they want on any topic they want. And it's always advisable to err on the side of caution on that. And yes, you guys get more than three minutes to rebut if you don't like what the citizens say, and that's, that's true. But all of you get trained in open meeting law. You already know this, you should know this. Some of you have been held multiple seats in elected office and been, received this training multiple times. I mean, it's not, as my husband hates it when I say it, rocket science, all right? The case law, the open meeting law, is very clear on this. And so when someone comes to the podium and they wish to speak, you get to let them speak. You don't get to end the meeting, Travis. That's illegal. You know it, because as a city councilman, you were found to have violated open meeting law. I know you've been repeatedly trained in this. And so it doesn't matter whether you felt or anticipated what I was going to say was within the purview of the action of the board, I had a right to say it, and I'm going to come back and I'm going to say it.
That's the last person that we have to speak during call to the public. I would respond that anything that is, what's, what's the word, disruptive, I think is what's in our rules of order. If someone were to come up and play the bagpipes for three minutes, they would be ruled disruptive. You wouldn't be able to do that. And then also defamation is not protected speech under the First Amendment, and that's all I have to say. We're adjourned.